It is. Okay. We call a meeting to order between Committee of the Whole and the Police and Fire Commission, considerations involving hiring of a police chief. We have this meeting together so everybody's on the same page on the hiring. You had some questions on it, didn't you, Peter?
Well, I think what we had really was just a lack of understanding of how the fire and police commission and the village kind of interact with this whole thing. I don't know that, you know, this is all kind of new to, I think, most of us, so we as the board just kind of didn't look.
Let's start with it just a little bit. First thing we need to cover is the fire department. Okay, when the Hortonville Fire Department in the, if I'm correct, now, please correct me if I'm wrong, but if the Hortonville Department joined, it was taken out from under our purview. So we really are only a police commission. We have nothing to do with the fire department.
Gotcha, just it's a, the name just stuck.
Yeah, it just stuck. If you look at the statues, it refers to it that way. But we really have nothing to do with the fire department.
Understood, thank you.
So as the police commission, this, you know, I've been here probably the longest. So the history of it is, we really got put into the spot many years ago at the end of Chief Hanson's reign. Okay, with that as the chief of police. It was, we were called together and because of the statue actually requiring our presence. If you, attorney Swartson can explain it all to you if you'd like. But there is a statue, Wisconsin State statue, and I don't have the numbers here with me, but believe me, he's well versed in it after this past year. But it required that we be present for disciplinary issues. And what we technically really are, before we, this last session, all we did was handle as a review, shoot, no, a review board for the hiring process. And we reviewed the applicants and we performed a lot of questions. And we actually rated the applicants and basically a hiring list was made, one, two, three, four. Now, it has been a very long time since we set up our chief of police. Okay, we, I mean, we hired, I think this was, I think, sorry, it was maybe the fourth one that I've been involved in. Okay, so it really boils down that we haven't done a tremendous amount. Our position is, we make your hiring list for you and we are an appeals board. If you call up an officer and say, you're on two weeks' suspension. That officer wants to appeal that decision, we are his appeal board. Okay, and there've been a couple of times when that was getting close, but it's never come to happen. Okay, this whole session we just completed with the former chief of police, basically surprised me tremendously. And I still today wonder, I think it was, all of a sudden, somebody started looking at statues and they thought this is the best way to handle it for the legalists, maybe protect the village more from lawsuits and stuff like that.
And I quite honestly don't believe we want to go down that path again. What I'd like to know, and I think what the board would like to know, is just moving forward, what, when you say you are the, what was the word you used? You provide us with a hiring list, I think is what you're saying.
Yes, we provide the hiring list.
So you, but you do all the, basically, I'm just going to start from the beginning, just so that we're all on the same page. You guys put together an advertisement that says, these are the qualifications that we are looking for in the police chief.
Yeah, in the police chief, I was asked what should we look for.
Correct.
Yeah, and then, basically, that's what you got here.
Exactly, and I'm, what I'm trying to do is just kind of reenact what we talked about before, and that was the step-by-step procedure on how we get from A to B.
Well, okay, the advertisement goes out.
So the advertisement is written by you. The question that we had as a board is, do we as a board have any say in what the advertisement should say? Or do you want our opinion on it, or is it?
Well, I think you've got everything to say about it.
Okay.
You're paid for it.
And that's, and again, this is what we didn't know. So the, no, first thing is, you don't have anything written down that says, the chief will have a bachelor's degree. Absolutely.
The chief will do this, the chief will do that. We don't have that.
Correct. We just have, we have a list of what the chief's duty is out of.
Yeah, but to accurately perform those duties, you should look for a minimum of something.
Understood.
But one of the things here, this says, you want a bachelor's degree, you can probably in police science or a related field. Frankly, folks, your police chief should have a business mind. I would say possibly a business degree should be considered. I've got most of the, most of the better community police officers that I know, you could have either an administration degree, a business degree, business management. Because it is, the chief will be the guy that's doing the budget.
Absolutely.
And he's going to be managing a lot of little, technicality. I mean, things like, right now, Brian's covering them, but things like the computer system.
No, he's, he's running, he has employees that he's running as a business, that he has to keep.
And that's basically, it has to be run like a business.
Absolutely.
Okay. The other things, though, that, you know, we're talking about the chief, we need a working chief. Okay, he needs to be out on that street.
Absolutely.
If he's not out on that street, he doesn't really know 100% about what's going on. And the other things you're going to need, and he's salaried, and this is a good deal, it's a good thing. But he needs to be called at 2:00 in the morning, and we've had a serious assault. Or we've had a death in a vehicle accident down here on the street, something like that. He needs to be the kind of person that's going to get up and go down there to make sure that everything's taken care of right.
Absolutely.
And actually, in many cases, he's going to be the number two officer there. He's going to, he's going to be there to back up the other officer. He has to be involved.
Absolutely.
I think, I think some of our mistakes in the past was we got, after so many years with former chief, we got lax in things with what we expected from him. We should have expected, as the saying is when we began with him. Okay, we should have expected him to be more hands-on than he was. Okay, now, the next thing you need on your chief is he's got to be smart enough to work within the problems that are out there. Now, some of our problems, and I'm not sitting here saying they're a big issue.
And I'm not going to, I understand what you're saying. And those are the qualifications that we need to understand when we want a chief. And that's what, what I would like to know is, once we get the advertisement where we're all comfortable with what it has to say and what we're looking for in it, we then receive how many applications? And we're going to get one or 100?
There are many, it's a shame.
Right, exactly. We might get zero. But whatever we get, then the application process and the interview process is by the?
Will be by us.
By you.
But there'll be some interim steps.
Okay.
That's where our officer in charge over here, there will be a background check done.
Absolutely, no, 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 but there's going to be all kinds of different steps.
Yes, but this is what we done before they get to.
Absolutely.
Okay, we're going, when we're done, we're going to hand the hiring officer, whoever, you guys, you guys or your village administrator or whatever, we're going to hand them a list, and this is our, this is our list, one, two, three, four. And, you know, and then, folks, you know, I mean, maybe when you start talking salary with them, they don't want the job.
Okay, so that's, that's where I was going with this. You're going to come up with a list of any number of, it might be one, it might be 10 guys that you really like, and here are the people, so then, the process will then turn to this board as to which one you want to hire.
We will give it to you now, as the police officer, when we do the part-time and full-time officers, that is the hiring list, one, two, three, four, five. And yet, for some reason, and this has happened many times, mine can tell you, one, two, and three didn't come, wouldn't quite as sleek and clean as we thought they were.
Okay, so you're going to give us a list and it's going to be one, two, three, four, whatever.
Yeah. And then you're going to make your decisions.
So it would be the board's responsibility to, are we going to then vet one, two, three, four, five? Or are we just going to talk to number one and say, yeah, we like him, he falls within our criteria of what our, of what we like, and that's who we hire? Or do we, is it the board's responsibility to do the same thing?
Maybe that's more your responsibility, we'll give you the list. Our number one, like Martin was saying, our number one is going to be who we think is best. Who we think, not that you think.
That's why you still need to look at each one of those individuals. We think you are number one, two, and three.
Gotcha.
But you guys need to make that decision.
So we have the final decision maker on who we hire.
For chief, absolutely.
That wasn't my understanding. My understanding was you guys do the hiring.
If you want us to do it, we'll do it, huh?
I'm just going by what we were told the statues say, that the police commission does the hiring.
Well, I think, I think you got to, because you know, when we did the police commission before, you know, and Brian's been there, we were never hiring a chief. We were making a list of officers and who's available. And so I think, I think as, I think as a chief, I think you need to be involved.
Right.
And you go down the line.
I just don't really know what that involvement is. Literally, I don't know. Your involvement is, you're going to interview them. I mean, so you're going to get all this paperwork, basically, you're going to get a resume, you're going to get everything like you would for any other job. You have to keep in mind, what do you want for this village? We're going to be asking questions, we're going to be saying, hey, you know, what about this? And we're all going to talk about it.
We usually have a set battery of questions. We ask each applicant the same questions. And then we have a free time for, you know, if you've got any other questions, you know, then he asks you the questions. But we usually have the same battery of questions. And one of them, I can tell you right now, some of the questions I'm going to be asking are, what is your experience with working with the WPPA? Because they're prominent. And we need someone who's going to be able to work with them and be able to work with members of the WPPA, which is the Wisconsin Professional Police Officers Association. I'm going to ask them, how are you going to handle agreements?
We've learned a lot from this past year. Absolutely. Let me ask a question. Peter, you were kind of shaking your head, there was.
Well, I think the process should go, as you guys are talking about, if there's four applicants you see fit, then maybe it's the public safety that does the initial interviews. Would this fall under public safety?
Well, here.
So with that in mind, then maybe the public safety committee makes a recommendation to the board for approval, ranked in order of the four, maybe one isn't the top one that we choose, maybe number three. And then we rank them, you know, one, two, three, and four, and then we go through the same process we did with, when we hired the administrator.
Can I tell you about the history of all this? The history is, we did that and you guys hired them. That's the way it was. And that's how.
So did the board hire them, or did the public safety?
No, we never hired, we've never hired.
No, no, you, did the village board hire that person or did it go through public safety?
You're talking 16, 17 years ago. I'm sorry.
Wouldn't it make sense, and I'm just throwing this out there to streamline things, if what you're saying to me, Martin, is we're going to, you're going to do a set of interviews, you're going to put your list together, and then you're going to hand that list over to us, and then we're going to go through that same process, basically.
Yeah.
Wouldn't it make sense to do it as a board and a committee?
Together?
Yes.
I see a little problem there, because they may be skewed in one way.
And the other thing is your statues, I think you better, you better run that before.
Yeah.
And I'm not talking about going to whatever jail we go to if we do something wrong here.
No, I know.
Let's say one you don't like.
But I mean, but I mean, to me, that, to me, it would make sense.
You want to cut some of that off.
Actually, we do some bias issue here. I think your proposal said that if the two factions get together, they may have their choice in mind and may try to sway the rest of us. I think the clean way to do it is, they come to us with a list of four applicants, and we pick through those and we vet it.
Well, they're going to, they're going to come to us and they're going to tell us, this is number one, this is number three.
I totally agree. But I don't see us collectively getting together to make that final decision. That's where I'm going. I guess I agree that they should do, let them go through the process.
Do their thing and then.
And then we do our process.
You know, the whole process doesn't mean the whole board says.
No.
Then I can do it. That's why I brought up the public safety. See, maybe that should, maybe it should go through public safety first, we do all the foot and groundwork and everything, and then we make a decision that this is the top person, maybe their third choice.
So you're saying, let them do their thing and then safety does their thing and then it comes to the board?
Right, so it's a three-step process.
And honestly, honestly, when you think about it, it's a little cleaner that way.
Right.
Because you have, you know, four of us sitting there, four or five of us sitting there. We each rate the individuals the way we see them.
Separately.
Yeah, nobody rates them the same, anything like that, and then we all give the papers. You know, so that's a very clean, and the way it works out is, the numbers always work out well for us.
It's also not the.
To the public safety, I guess, you say that that's the cleanest way to full board or a public?
Now, that's up to you guys. The way we've always worked it is, we don't hire them, we make that list, we give you that list on it. You guys do what you want.
I understand where you're going with the public safety, but I would like to hear from the two non-members of the public safety as to their opinion of going that route.
I'd like to give, I think we have, we should have, it's two extra people. And I think I'd like that opportunity.
So you could do it as committee of the whole.
Exactly.
Committee of the whole. But I've got another question. And it's only because I don't, I need help with the process. So at any point in your previous, I mean, obviously, this was 14 or so years ago. We had a lot less officers at that time. Were the officers at any time pulled in to help with any of the interviews? Like when we interviewed a new library director, we actually pulled a staff member in to help us with that interview process, because we felt that that gave them a little bit of a, of an insight.
And put them back.
Yeah, and it was nice to have a staff member present. They were just one person in a group, but it was nice to have representation. And they felt, the employees felt a lot better having that representation. And I mean, Brian's right here.
Brian was sent in on several of ours.
Yeah.
The one thing about the chief position, we did, and this was our last current chief, we had the chief of another crew from another city set in and questioned.
And I think that would depend on which community, you know.
Well, in this case, it was New London that time. But like I'm telling you, that was a while years ago.
I just know when we did library board, when we did library director, just having that one employee gave us, it also gave us a different insight. They had different types of questions when we were coming up with those set of questions. They had a different type of question than we would as a board.
Yeah. Apparently, we've had local officers sent in on our hiring process on a number of occasions. And really, we didn't give them the opportunity. They weren't allowed to really part of it, because we wanted to do everybody exactly the same. Okay, we wanted to get, you know, we asked the same questions in the same scenario of each officer. And we scored that officer, the officer applicant, excuse me, I shouldn't put applicant. We scored that applicant based, you know, on that, and then after it was all over with, we compared their scores, and then we compiled our list. You can't, you cannot really, I think in the chief, in going for the chief, I think it would be a mistake to have a current-serving Hortonville police officer present.
I would agree.
I agree.
That makes clear the mission.
You mean, have a present, but could they help with any of the questions? I mean, or do you just have a sense of options?
We give scenarios, of police officers, we give different scenarios to than we do the chief. What we're looking for in the chief will be different, and we're still putting it together for, I mean, like I said, it's been a bunch of years. We're going to be looking for professionalism, experience, knowledge, and just basic bearing in how we can, how we're going to be, trying to find out how we feel he'll interact with the department. Because we have a risk, we've got to heal. Okay, and that's, you know, we're looking for the right one. I got to tell you, I don't know what we're going to get for applicants. And until we have them, we really can't answer that, folks.
Martin, I'm going to ask you a question, I'm going to go back to what you said before. Do you feel an MBA is a necessity? I think, you know, you're looking for somebody that has an MBA that's going to drive that, what's the current?
No, I'm just, we're looking for bachelors.
Well, you had mentioned MBA before.
No, he said business degree.
A business degree.
A MBA, did you?
That's a long reach for a officer.
So you, because before you said business administration, I took that to mean an MBA.
Even political science.
Right.
These are all things that would work. Okay, I've known a lot of officers, and they were police officers first, and then they got their bachelor's degrees down the line, went to college and all. I've known a lot of officers that really didn't stay in law enforcement. I currently, myself, have a master's degree in criminal justice administration. It is totally worthless now that I'm retired age. Okay, I don't blame them. I think an officer that goes on for a master's in criminal justice is wasting his time. I would have been in much better shape if I'd gone for an MBA. It'd have probably been a lot easier, too.
Yeah, probably.
But anyway, you know, we're not expecting a master's. I would be a little surprised that whoever we had, if they're totally complacent with just a bachelor's. Now, you know, maybe somewhere down the line, they're going to pick up a course here, or a course there, or learn something different. That's ideal. But, you know, I just don't think we should just honor ourselves around, you must have a bachelor's or criminal justice. I'm sorry, I don't think that's a good idea. We're much better off with a good business person. I mean, we got, we got good MCOs, you know, that can handle that. The absolute gladiator and bust chops if have to.
So who takes this up?
You know, and I should add here, there were two that, I'm going to hand these out, because one of them was just the job posting, and one was like duties and responsibilities. So you may have gotten some different copies here, so. Let me just make sure that everybody's got their copies that they need.
Isn't the goal after tonight is to get this position posted, right?
Yeah.
After this evening, we tweak this tonight.
Start hunting that?
Get this tweaked tonight, and then it should be ready to go.
You know, in this, I've guessed, you know, this 10 years of experience and five years of street life experience came from me. That could be tweaked one way or another, folks. But you don't want to hire somebody to be chief who's never been in command. Okay, so they got to have some command experience, and they need to have some good law enforcement experience. Because, I mean, you don't make a chief without having basically major bones, you know. You've gone out, you've handled accidents, you've handled suicides, you've handled these things.
I don't know why you wouldn't want to do at least that minimum and see what you get.
Well, you know, and if you have a really good applicant that came in here with, well, he's been a sergeant on the big city police department for four years, maybe you want to consider it.
Absolutely.
You know, this is just, what do you want to go look for?
Yeah. Well, then, do we need to look at this education then, and maybe expand that?
I would say expand, I would say bachelor's degree is needed, either bachelor of art or bachelor of science. But if it could be, you know, you need to hit the related area a little more, business management.
So had that have to education, just our business?
Yeah, our, you know, it's here it's saying for a bachelor's in criminal justice, or if I read it correctly, or a related field. But what I'm trying to say to you, a related field is political science, business management. You know, there's a lot, you have to crunch a lot of numbers before you start.
Maybe if you call some of the, maybe if you call that out, you know.
Yeah, so just.
Bachelor's degree, just leave it blank.
Leave it for that.
I think you do that.
Well, I mean, I think you're leaving it a little more wide open with the way you have it, in the bachelor's degree and.
Well, a lot of these people, this they actually want to.
Police science are related.
Yeah.
They've already went to.
Okay, it's two-year school.
Absolutely.
But if the, the ideal saying, we just got to have a, you know, bachelor's degree in law enforcement, is foolish. Most of your officers that you're going to see have at least a bachelor, or.
Associates.
Have at least an associate degree. But the kind of person that we're needing will be someone with a bachelor's, who has enough.
Where did the longer version of this come from?
Well, there's probably a 101 version.
No, I think, because the one that was sent out, when, was it the shorter version or was?
I did not see what was sent out.
I thought it was.
I do have any of the, I've seen this copy.
I've seen this one.
Diane sent me both, both of his copies, and she just asked me to give those all to the committee tonight.
I was going to say, this is more of what is going to be posted out there for the applicant.
Right.
Where this is, okay, what are the duties, that's what this is, it's not.
Well, this is, this is more of, this is more of, this is what the duties of the officer are, from the chief are.
Pretty much, correct?
Yeah. Duties and requirements.
Right.
Yeah, you know, it's, your ad that you're going to put out there, first of all, is not going to be as worthy as all this.
No.
Okay, it's going to need to be more along the line of, you know, just basically, we have a chief's position, open minimum requirements, or such, and such, and such, and such. You know, you're going to have to put something about salary, but you can also put to be determined or something like that. You don't have, you don't have to listen.
That's exactly what this is.
I know, but that's more than you're going to be able to put out.
We need this first part, number one. All you need is that middle part, and then move up your salary depending on.
This whole part, though, could be available on the website, the full part.
You could put, yeah, you could.
Yeah, we're going to put this, Brian, it's going to be on the magazine, so it's going to be actually.
Yeah, I would assume that it would be posted on WileyNet, which is the state of Wisconsin. Website.
Yeah. But they don't need to know that right now.
No.
The benefits, you wouldn't need to know. No, no, they would need to know this whole. Oh, no, 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 absolutely. But I would say everything, but in that, if you, if you put something out, if you tweak this one a little bit, this shorter one, there could be a link to this one.
Exactly.
That way, they can go through and read everything they want to know, with this included, with this part, with this part included up here or something.
We normally post all the extra pieces on the village website, so that we make reference to that, and then people can go and get the extra information.
Well, you really, you need to tweak it down a little bit, get it out there if you want to. You know, it may be that we don't get anybody that we really like.
We may have.
Until we get past this.
You don't know.
Absolutely. So what are we, is that, I guess, is this what we wanted to say, unless the first paragraph?
What do you guys think?
But I personally don't have a problem with that, it's just neat.
Well, I think you go with the second paragraph and, like we said, and we said, you know, put starting salary on it, so it depends on the qualifications, or to be determined.
To be determined, to be determined. I think that's the way to go.
I think that's all you really need from this first.
You would shut it, and you wouldn't put the benefits down?
I would.
No. I think so, this is available on the village website, so if somebody is interested.
Yeah, okay, and, you know. The chief get a full, a full range of benefits?
Yes.
I mean, full benefit package.
And people are automatically going to know there's going to be benefits. And then you can just put a link for benefit information, for more information and benefits, click here or something.
Yes, yes, the leadership.
But, yeah.
Well, I was going to say, I mean, just what you said, this paragraph right here.
Yeah.
And then, hey, to be determined, you know.
Yeah.
That's fine to be.
I think that's, well, you know, it's short, it's to the point, that's what they need to know. And like you said, there's a link that they can go to and see all the other information.
If I'm interested in the job that I want.
So I'm going to tell you what, if you're smart, I guess you're smart enough to click on the link and figure it all out, and they still apply, that's great. If they don't, well, we didn't want to miss. and figure it out, and they still apply, that's great, if they don't, well, we didn't wanna do it.
Well, maybe you just made the, but that you may not like any of them. For me personally, if you don't like any of them...
You got the room, well, I'll get it.
Don't, I mean, don't pick one just because.
No, we're not going, we're not going. But there is, we can't just throw them out. Okay, but we have your resume on file.
Well, yeah, that, yeah, that's what I mean. There's your job, there's your resume. You won't do all of the resumes. I don't like any of them.
What is it?
No.
What's the type of...
I'm doing it just because.
Like, how many weeks do you normally have it posted? Is it, do you have a...
I would say two weeks.
Two weeks, two weeks.
You know, some people...
I can just rerun it.
Some, sometimes though, you think about it, I mean, you guys, here's some guy that's a sergeant from somewhere and, uh, and he, he has to think about it just a, a week or so and then, then it takes him a day or two to come up with his resume and apply. Um, you know, we've, we've gotten, um, we've had people come from, in the past, like I said, it's been twenty-something plus years I've been doing this. But we've had people come from other cities. And so things like your residency requirement has to be available for these people to know. And I don't know what it is now, but if you require them...
You can't require them anymore.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's no, police shouldn't live in the village.
Chief's police can't, doesn't...
Yeah, the state doesn't allow it.
State, yeah.
State doesn't allow it.
That's still...
That you require your residency.
Well, that kinda defeats the whole purpose.
Yeah, that was like a City of Milwaukee policing fire mission, maybe.
You could do like we did with Diane and suggest that they do, but you can't make them do it.
Well, that's something we need to keep in mind in when we're selecting. Because, you know, having a chief of police that's living out of way, that's what's gonna do it, that's gonna...
You are allowed to, um, take into effect how fast they can respond and what it has to do with their job duties. Because if they can't reasonably respond and perform their job duties, then they have to move closer, but you're not allowed to absolutely dig deep.
I'm sure you're right.
That's how you gotta... I guess we just have to figure out, you know, what a, what a good time is that we all want and...
Yeah.
So, I mean, are we agreed that we're okay with the second paragraph of...
We gotta change that deadline, though.
But there's a sentence in here, Don was just...
The deadline and that...
Gosh, yeah.
We won't change the deadline. Making, making a tweak on the deadline and making that at least two weeks, three weeks? What do we want, two? Two? Same way we have. So from, from the date that we posted, two weeks beyond that would be the deadline. And it would be the second, would be the second paragraph and then the starting salary, which either would either be two, be determined or, um, depending on qualifications, so...
DOQ.
Right. So, and I don't care what that is personally. Um, they're, they're gonna know what that is, so are we...
The one sentence that you have in there, though, where it says a bachelor's degree in law enforcement are related, that just restates the sentence above it, kind of, that says looking for, uh, positions, having management positions in law enforcement or related field.
No.
No, because you're looking for a degree as well as experience.
Just, you'd rather, from what I understand, you would rather have just a, just a bachelor's degree rather than in law enforcement.
I think, I think a chief of police, you're gonna, and I don't know, I shouldn't say this, one, one could assume that you're gonna be doing that, but do you wanna call it out? That way you can say anything.
No, I actually like the whole related field because it gives a little more flexibility.
Yeah. Yeah, but you, but you determine whether it's related.
Exactly. So if it's not...
Are we saying, leave it as it is then?
I get it.
Or is it all...
So then my, then the question, the, the next question begs, do we need to make a motion to? Is there, do we need to make a motion for that?
Committee of the Hall really can only make recommendations to...
Right, sport. Okay, so we gotta, we gotta languish on this for another week or so?
That's up to you if you want to go ahead and have PFC put it out.
Just let them put it out.
Let them put it out.
I don't know.
I mean, according to this, we should have hired somebody by June fifteenth.
Exactly. So that, my question then is, do we need, is there anything that the committee of the Hall, we can, we just go, you know, not...
Well, the board voted, didn't we, at our last meeting?
The board voted to start the process of hiring the chief.
So that's meant to mean we've initiated the process of hiring the chief.
The process now was to discuss on what the ad would be. We've come to a meeting of the minds on what the ad would be, we'll move from there.
Yeah.
Full board.
But I would say let's get you guys going ahead, just bless you.
Well, let's make sure we've got all one of these, 'cause, Brian, will you do the posting? On that, on the website?
Yes, well, I, yeah, I can work with, with Diane on that. There's a, there's a law enforcement website that we use, um, for the state of Wisconsin for hiring, so I can work together with Diane once, once we have it hammered out, what we wanna exactly to say.
Okay, when is she back?
Do you want it done on the...
Yeah.
She'll, she'll be back tomorrow.
Oh, she'll be back, alright. Well, I, she's probably gone a week, we're gonna have another week in here, we need to expand the... Couple of other weeks.
We will put it out on that website, we will put it out on the legal Wisconsin municipalities and we will put it out on the villages site as well.
Yes. Diane should be back tomorrow.
So as I take it, that will reflect the exact wording in the second paragraph, is that correct?
The village of Hortonville is seeking a chief of police candidates, is that what you're...
Yeah, with the exception, of course, of the last sentence. And then starting salary would be DOQ. So that would be the text?
Correct.
Okay.
So two weeks, wrong. The other posting goes tomorrow, then we would, then we would run it from that. Since we're talking about Wednesday, you know, usually people do it on Thursday or Friday, something like that for the deadline.
Push it out to the...
Push it out to Friday.
Yeah, push it out to Friday.
Yes, it's...
What would you think about doing three weeks instead of two? I'm afraid that's, that's...
I don't know. Yeah, I don't know.
You probably forgot you had...
You always think three weeks, do three weeks.
We're talking about a major position here?
Yes.
Yeah. What do you think?
Three weeks, Tuesday to July twenty...
Three, three weeks.
Okay. And again, I would, I would say, I don't know who made that recommendation, but I would say if you post it tomorrow, I would do it three weeks to the Friday of that last week.
That would be August fourth.
Three weeks to two days or whatever.
Yeah.
August fourth.
No, that's fine.
You know, just, it gives...
And if we don't get anything that looks any good, we just throw it out again.
Right, exactly. Reword it.
So the deadline would read August fourth, uh, two thousand seventeen at three PM?
Please call me, so I can...
Is that right?
Where do the applications go?
They'll have to go through Diane, 'cause the website.
You're in help, so will they...
What we do is we have the instructions, the, the instructions are normally in the ad.
That's fine.
Telling you where this is supposed to be going. But all, all that we would be doing would be putting a stamp on it and holding them.
Question for you then. Does, do they have to be able to apply online or do, can we expect a mailed resume?
It depends on where you wanna go, in the past, we've always taken the mailed resumes. So they have to arrive by?
Yeah, I would, I would say, but I would, I would encourage both.
Because otherwise they just simply have to email it or fax it or something to us. Some people even walk them in.
Yeah, but I would, I would encourage, yeah.
I would encourage all of this.
Walk in or even...
Especially if they're running late, they'll walk them in.
Yeah.
You know, I would say with our current law enforcement, um, postings fifty percent coming electronically and, and, you know, and the other half through the mail. The only thing that I would say in here is, um, typically we, we tell them what we're asking. Are we asking for a, a Village of Hortonville application, a resume, what are, what are we asking them to provide to us to review? Cause it doesn't...
The Village of Hortonville application is pretty hefty, isn't it? It's that...
You know, we don't, in, in law enforcement, we use what they call DJ LE three thirty and it's, it's, um, it's, it's, it's an ad, a four-page application. So that would be the question that I, you know... You know, in, in chief positions, I have to take a look at other chief postings. Um, I think that in other cases, a lot of times they'll use the resume and the, the city or village or town application, so that's something that you guys have decided. For, for officers, as a standard, the DJ LE three thirty, 'cause it asks questions about, are you a certified law enforcement officer? Those things won't be asked on, on, you know, the village application.
I think you need a resume.
Yeah, we, we can fill out anything else that we want.
But then, then if we got, if we got some of the resume, you know, we, we said, when we, we get the resume, we get some that looks really good, I'll buy the resume, then we send them out. You know, we tell them, please submit this also, or we send it out to them. Um, then we have it all in a package when we sit down to do our interview.
Can you not send that application over to the village site to have it on the village site?
The DJ LE three thirty?
Yeah.
Um, we could, yeah, I mean, I could, and, and when we post it, certainly if they have any law enforcement experience in Wisconsin, they'll know what the, the DJ is. Um, but we could, I certainly can add a link to the, the DJ.
Is that something we want for the chief or do we just want the resume and the village app?
Well, the village app really doesn't do much.
I would say that, but the...
Just the, just the resume.
Just the resume.
And then, and then maybe, like you say, if we get a resume and we like pay Phil and DJ sixty-two...
I still think it's gonna need to have it back, considering they have...
But then that delays that further. I mean, couldn't they just do, submit resume and application? I mean, like, if they're gonna do it electronically, they would do their, they would have it...
That's what we always ask for.
There was problems with all this. And I, I, you know, there's somebody somewhere down the line here is going to be running all these off the computer, reviewing them and all that. And I'm not really sure that that's what we want. Okay? I think there should be, um, you know, I, I, I want, uh, the board to have every application that we can review, okay? Now, if we're, we're gonna, if we're gonna, because we don't like them, but the board needs to see them all, okay? So I wanna make sure that we're getting them all.
And, and you should.
Yeah, we should, but, well, we gotta, we gotta get them. And then they're gonna be coming to the village. So there's that question of who's going to be going through them and all this. Now, Brian's gonna have to go through them, I'll tell you right now, 'cause we are going to do a record check on, on anybody we even seriously consider.
Well, and any that's used needs to be collected at the end of any meeting and...
Yeah.
I mean, that's...
But we've gotta, we've gotta count them and we do that on the officer's applications. Actually, it's been a long time since the chief...
Martin, why would, and, and again, I honestly don't know the answer to this, so I apologize for this stupid question, but why would the board, why would we as a board wanna see every application if you're gonna go through a culling process?
Just to... Well, we're going to. But, but what I'm saying, if you get three hundred applications and we get it down to five, the board doesn't need to see three of them?
Yeah.
He's just saying he wants to make sure that they see all the...
Okay, now five, or something.
They don't want them to see all of them, we can really see one of the recommendations.
You're gonna get the cream.
That's what I, that's what I thought we discussed.
But wouldn't you want them to submit an application and resume at the same time? Or are you gonna...
I, well, for, for other jobs, um, I've submitted a resume and until they actually talk to you, a lot of times they won't take it. Until, sometimes until you're even hired, they're like, I mean, we're gonna take you, but you gotta fill out a resume first, or you gotta fill out the application first and...
Sure. You know, really, you might only wind up half and half, two or three applications.
Right.
Because you've got to...
You can narrow that process. And that's what you were saying before, when you saw, when you was talking about what you have to do, whoever you're gonna go to is gonna answer you with all this stuff.
Correct.
So if we just have the resume, then we can go, okay, now have it filled out.
And the thing is that, you know, we've got a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks anyway, because we're, we're doing a part-time officer. But, um, it may be such that we sit down and, and just go through them.
Yeah, I would think that.
Yeah. And, you know, if, we're going to have some minimum things we expect, I mean, to be honest with you, if we've got a guy that's got some kind of a past, um, you know, under intrigue, or maybe he got some time in the years past, he, you know, got a little violent with his wife or something like that, we don't have cash.
That's why...
That needs to be called by you.
Yeah. So, so we'll call, we'll call it and then we will have our, we'll have our interview and we'll bring you, and, you know, something you guys need to think about, who's gonna talk to them about salaries? Who's gonna talk, you know, who's gonna talk to them?
And that we need to...
You know, we have never done that, that is new, whatever. We never talked about rates, salaries or anything, that's always been you guys.
By the time you hand it off, so we'll have an idea what's...
So you will meet sometime after August fourth and then, between now and then, then we'll figure out...
How we're gonna do our process.
But you know that your deadline, or the deadline is August fourth, so you don't need to set up your own...
And I, I will get with Diane and I will, I will arrange for a, a box or something to be shipped, where all the apps go in it.
Yeah, that's...
Then we'll get into it.
Yeah.
And I have one question from something you mentioned earlier, where you said about doing background checks before you go through these. Wouldn't you do it after you've looked at...
Yeah, anything, sure, you just get a background...
But you get it down to like five or six and then do background checks on them, right?
Probably more like ten or...
Well, you want like ten. Well, yeah, but you'll, you'll narrow it down and then do that.
But I don't know, does it cost you to run those? Well, we're not gonna tie you up with fifty, I don't know.
But an application has the authorization to run the background check, you can't just run it based on their resume.
Brian always gets the form filled out.
And he does have the authority to run the background checks for a law enforcement job.
With just a resume, without an application?